Call the regular City Commission meeting in order for please rise for the in the country, Commissioner Bennett.
Father God, thank you for this day, thank you for the opportunity to assemble together and govern ourselves, and ask for protection for our first responders and our staff, and please watch and rest and give us wisdom, or as we make decisions. Jesus name I pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
Thank you, like to welcome all here this evening. First on the agenda is the critical amendments from our April the thirteenth meeting, they have been distributed. Are there any additions, solutions, or corrections? Here we now, we need a motion.
So move.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried unanimously. Next, we have a proclamation, World Autism Month Awareness Day. Whereas autism spectrum disorders are a broad range of conditions characterized by repetitive patterns of behavior and challenges with social skills, speech, and nonverbal communication. And where autism spectrum disorders affect at least one in thirty-six children and a unknown number of adults in the United States of all genders, races, ethnicities, and socioeconomic backgrounds. And whereas early, accurate diagnosis and appropriate education, intervention, and support are vital to the well-being of those with autism spectrum disorders. And whereas persons with an autism spectrum disorder should have access to the care, services, and opportunities needed to be happy and achieve their greatest potential. And whereas the city of Winter Garden is honored to take part in the annual observance of World Autism Month and World Autism Awareness Day with the hope that it will lead to more research and better understanding and acceptance of autism spectrum disorder. Therefore, it is my great pleasure and privilege as the mayor of the city of Winter Garden to proclaim April twenty twenty-three as World Autism Month and April the second of twenty twenty-three as World Autism Awareness Day. In Winter Garden to raise public acceptance and understanding of autism spectrum disorder as well as to increase knowledge of the efforts that have been and are being made to support individuals with autism spectrum disorder and their families. Thank you to me.
Thank you very much, I think Victor has a couple words. Your words?
Yes.
Okay, come on.
Here you are. I'm Victor Wright, I live here in Winter Garden. I want to thank my friend, the mayor, and everyone for not forgot about autism awareness. It's very important for my families like, like mine to be included, I'm welcome here in Winter Garden. I live where, I live with the garden and West Orange High School. Thank you, my mom and dad, and my special arts farm, my teachers, my coaches for always caring and loving me. Thank you.
Thank you. City managers, thank you again for allowing us to express our gratitude for this proclamation. John, you know, we go back thirteen years, you did something, you reached out to start an idea about autism awareness many years ago. And I really do appreciate all the efforts from the golf outing to raising funds to get iPads for our dual elementary school. Autism awareness is still very important, however, the focus is moving towards action. There's two programs, as briefly I want to mention, the first is Special Arts Farm, you see the shirt that Victor is wearing right now, and Discoverability. Both are very unique, very similar in vision to help special needs young adults learn meaningful job skills and to get employed. Early today, I sent the general summary regarding the fantastic work that Cappaminha is doing with our team, that's Special Arts Farm, an extended invitation for everyone, if you can make it, I hope you receive that. Secondly, is Discoverability, their entire mission is to take high and medium function young adults, work, train, and mentor them over a year to get them ready for OJT. The cost of the program or company, for the company is actually zero, and all it does is help these kids get ready for meaningful employment. So we hope that folks out here that have companies and so forth, you would consider. Again, thank you.
First reading of public character protestances, and for orders twenty-two dash forty, twenty-two dash forty-one, and twenty-two dash forty-two, we need a motion to postpone.
Uh, motion to postpone, ordinance twenty-two forty, twenty-two forty-one, twenty-two forty-two, to date to be determined.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, this motion carried unanimously. Ordinance twenty-three dash twelve.
Ordinance twenty-three dash evolve, and ordinance of the city of Winter Garden, Porta, granting to Duke Energy, Fordham LLC, due investments as Duke Energy, an electric utility right-of-way utilization franchise, prescribing the terms and conditions relating to the occupancy of municipal streets and ride-aways in the city of Winter Garden, Florida, for the purpose of providing electric service, providing seven million provisions, and providing an effective date.
Yes, sir.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, before you, in ordinance twenty, twenty-three twelve, is the franchise agreement renewal between Duke Energy, Porta, and the city of Winter Garden. The term of this agreement is ten years and replaces the current third-year agreement, which expired December twenty twenty-four. Ordinance twenty-three twelve essentially grants Duke Energy the ability or the continued permission and authorization to use and occupy and the, the rights-of-way for the essential purposes of operating, maintaining, and distributing electric services to citizens of Winter Garden, residents, and businesses. The, uh, the franchise fee is six percent and will remain as it is today with the current agreement on it, the current thirty-year agreement. The, the payment on this, on the unfranchised fees will be on a monthly basis payable to the city, the staff, as well as the attorneys of both Duke Energy and the city of Winter Garden, reviewed the, the language and the provisions of this agreement. And so, we therefore recommend approval of ordinance twenty-three twelve. Have here, or any questions?
Questions from the commission?
I have a few, uh, some of them I'll take up with the city manager between readings, but generally speaking, before I, before I go in and vote yes to give Duke Energy another ten years, certainly we've had some less than spectacular service during the storms, uh, notable, and, and we'd like to see that addressed, we also saw some areas where, um, we expected redundant power systems to be in place, and we found out that not only were those redundant systems not in place, but to do so would have been a hurtling effort that would have taken several more days beyond the time it would have just compared to current system, which was very unexpected. And then, of course, and I think, and I may already have seen enough power poles, we'd like to see something going underground. So, there's some things in there that I, I would like to between at least readings, go back and continue to have those discussions and say, how can we improve the quality of service, especially during critical times of storms? Where can we do the navigate, uh, guarantee power lines as we go forward? And then just general other service level. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
We, I knew, I met with him, talked a good bit about this, and like all of our reservations, things you would like differently, but we do understand, uh, where we are in, in this. I do want to thank Mark and John for, for all their work. A lot of things that I brought up, uh, you know, they look at me and smiles, and then we try to.
I don't know, you know, uh, there's a lot of things, and, and, you know, one of the most critical as well, they were sitting here telling how they're gonna work with us, and then you drive, uh, your car down Plant Street. Really, so I'm hoping that, uh, though going forward, we do have a better, uh, working relationship, I guess, and I think, uh, you know, I think we'll, if I may offer. Yes.
There's some comments, I have that there has been, uh, prior storms, some customer service response issues that developed, I can honestly say that my tenure here, uh, we've had an open dialogue with Duke Energy, meet quarterly, uh, put concerns on the table, they address concerns, uh, so from my perspective, the level of customer service has improved tenfold. Uh, if you ride through town, you will see some newer poles, and that's part of the hard being effort to improve, uh, the reliability of, of the grid, uh, during storms, uh, and, you know, obviously, you know, sometimes we think for day comes here, some of the storms will be, uh, but as we're approving this, we, we have an open dialogue within our rating on cost estimates, because we want to place a priority on undergrounding, so, uh, we are, we are making those priorities, um, and obviously, uh, still working together, uh, along approving true treatment. We're trying to balance everybody's needs. So it has improved.
Good. Okay, any other questions?
Just other comment, I would agree with John, you know, five years ago, it was pretty bad, we had some very, very frank discussions with him, and I know we're trying to do some stuff in East Winter Garden as well, and that's coming along, but I don't like, well, our performance, the manager talked about doing our own electric, and some safer way, and I think things have improved considerably since then.
This definitely has improved, but I know what we're working, at least when you're working with us, much better than before.
Five problems, I've had five, but you know, one, yeah, Winter Garden utility was up until nineteen sixty, or somewhere that way, and then it brought in, uh, which upset the time of lots of city residents, there were people on both sides of that, so, uh, and when you look at it, I mean, we have water, we have sewer, we have trash, we have gas, the only thing we don't have is electricity.
Who says that, that comes with its, with its issues too.
Oh, sure does, absolutely, I'm telling you, I like it. So, okay, any other questions? We need a motion.
Motion to approve, uh, ordinance twenty-three dash twelve, with staff.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? Yes, the second, sir. Public hearing, may the eleven.
Thank you.
All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mark, for you. Regular business recommendation to approve contract for central four of lift stations. Yes, sir.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, um, this is for lift station forty-seven, uh, this a, the lift station is in need of the existing riser pipes, valves, base plates, and supports to be replaced. Twenty-five year old lift station, and it comes out, we said, from the environment, central four lift station is provided to do the work, which also includes bypass bumping, so the function that's involved in doing the work, uh, and this will keep everything working, and the price is sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, with staff recommended.
Questions? Need a motion?
I also approve the repairs to the lift station in the amount of sixty-one eight sixty.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Thank you, sir. Recommendation to approve crowd strength, help incomplete related services. Yes, sir.
Mayor, Commissioners, how are you? As you all may know, uh, Florida House Bill seventy fifty-five mandates that Florida government agencies implement cybersecurity policies and procedures, uh, to ensure the protection of our confidential data. These practices are crucial for the city of Winter Garden, uh, to protect its digital infrastructure and sensitive information from cyber threats and cyber attacks. We've identified CrowdStrike as the first step in complying with some of these requirements. CrowdStrike is an endpoint security solution that provides advanced threat protection, managed detection, response, and managed threat, uh, excuse me, managed threat scanning services. By implementing CrowdStrike, city IT staff can improve the security posture of the city, and comply with some of the cybersecurity requirements as laid out in House Bill seventy fifty-five. With that, separate recommend approval of purchase of CrowdStrike, help incomplete and related services, at the cost of eighty thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-seven cents per year, and have the answer, any questions?
Questions from the commission?
No, it's a, it's a great step forward, certainly worked on prior in a large bank, which this was one of the many products we used for the feds, for all the things, and there came a company, it's the same way, so we're, it's well aligned, good job.
Any other questions? Need a motion?
Motion to approve CrowdStrike Falcon, uh, contract for eighty thousand, six hundred and three and forty-seven cents.
Eighty thousand, six thirty-six.
All right, but that, eighty thousand, six thirty-six and forty-seven.
Very good, grab a second. I'm sorry, we have a second, okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, sir. Recommendation for work purchase order, Carfield Construction Company. Yes, sir.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, uh, the asphalt on Plant Street between West Store Road and Linkin Road is in need of repair. The work will require a full closure of the roadway with detour set up to reroute traffic. Access to properties in the areas will not be blocked, will allow the, uh, block through traffic, so that folks can, their homes are live through. It is anticipated to take five business days, as weather permitting, because we plan to do this in the summer, when school is closed. We will do our best to minimize the impact to citizens, so. And with that, recommend that the city award purchase order in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars to Cath Park Construction Company to replace the asphalt on Plant Street. I would have to answer any questions?
It's five business days, weather permitting, so there's rain, so forth, they're gonna work on the weekends to get it finished, or will we main close seven days or eight?
No, sir, the, the five days actually, you know, gives us a little bit, uh, fluff.
So no contingency in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the contractor, I've spoken to him, he thinks he can do it in three.
Yeah.
I said five, just for that weather, don't ever touch on it.
Smart, okay. Any other questions?
No, excuse me, next class.
Okay, we need a motion.
Motion to approve, uh, Carfield Construction Company for the asphalt replacement for one hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, to be done in five weeks.
Grab a second.
Second.
Five less.
Five less.
We have a motion, we have a second, all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Recommendation to approve site plan for twelve nine twenty, twelve nine twenty-one Reeve Road. Yes, ma'am?
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, uh, this is a request for site plan approval for a ten point seven five acre property located at one two nine two zero and one two nine two one Reeve Road. This project includes constructing two, a two and three story senior living facility with sixty-five assisted living units and a hundred and one independent living units. The proposal is consistent with the property's P to D zoning ordinance, including the condition that the applicant record a hundred and forty-six wide conservation easement on the north side of the property that will maintain the existing vegetation in this area in perpetuity. Uh, the majority of the sites existing wetlands will likewise, will likewise be preserved within easements and buffered per code. Additionally, the building elevation at the top of the roof will not exceed what was shown in the original P to D plans. So that staff recommends approval of the Stewie Brook Place Senior Living Site Plan, subject to staff conditions. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions from the commission?
The plans to break ground?
I'm sorry?
Any plans to break ground?
To break ground on?
Break ground on the project.
On the project, uh, yes, after the site plan approval.
Okay, so they are moving that out, just.
I believe so, is the applicant here? Uh, what is the timeframe to get started on construction?
Just curious.
Oh, late summer, early fall.
Okay, great, thank you.
How many senior living facilities do we currently have?
I don't know if I have that number right off the top of my head, but, uh.
Yeah.
You've got, uh, two Sonata S's, and then, um, you've got the one out here on Highway fifty, and then the one on five, on road.
Golden Pond as well.
No, he said that.
I said, uh, Golden Pond, and they're expanding.
They're expanding, yes, so we have seen enough taken applications.
And that's, uh, that's my concern here, is that, you know, yeah, it's Florida, we keep doing things for older people, and I'm getting to be an older person, so I, I get that, but, you know, where do we put the, the young people, the working people, uh, you know, where are we building the communities for them to come into here and continue to prosper, so? It concerns that everybody wants to build a senior living thing, because, you know, they use the demographic data for that, but ultimately, you know, we're boxing ourselves in the future by just continuing to build retirement communities and not communities for the young as well, and it, it concerns me greatly that it can be, and I'm not saying your short sight might be, I mean, but short sight just in general for our entire region, so.
I can tell you that you're around here in the nineties, and probably starting in mid-eighties, the nineties, or the two thousands, you didn't see many young families around town, it got to be where you didn't see any, and then you go around here today, with the twenty golf carts and all the kids that are around town, I mean, we've had a lot of, a lot of young families that are, at least moving into, into this area, but I understand what you're saying, yeah.
I think we're seeing a lot of the down, the, the profitable business model, but percentage-wise, I would say our development's probably eighty percent residential.
It's much more skewed towards safety.
Just a lot of.
Let me see, R one.
My car.
Paddy two.
Golf cart front.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, uh, any other questions? If not, we need a motion.
Recommend approve the site plan for one two nine two zero and one two nine two one Reeve Road, with staff recommendations.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye. Motion carried forty-one. Recommendation to approve the event calendar.
Thank you, I, the event calendars, I think, were distributed to you all before the meeting, hopefully, have popular, advanced, uh, just a little background on this, as you all well know, city staff receives a large number of event applications throughout the year, uh, many of those events involve a lot of planning, coordination, and marketing efforts on the city side, uh, we often receive these applications really close to the date of the events themselves, with leaving little to no time for that coordination, uh, so to help streamline this process, staff is requesting that the city commission approve an event calendar that lays out all of the upcoming events for summer twenty twenty-three through spring twenty twenty-four, basically so we all know what's coming down the pike and we can plan accordingly. Uh, we will still require the application to be submitted to staff, and, uh, the application will, will still be brought to the city commission or later than sixty days prior to the event. And so with that, staff recommends, uh, the approval of the special event calendar for summer twenty twenty-three through spring twenty twenty-four.
Yes, ma'am, oh, this is, is intended, but, so it can, and is subject to change, um, so we have that, uh, we have a temporary more tournament place now, and as our staffing levels improve or not, uh, we may be able to come back to some more places that we set up for, you know, be able to, I'd say, you guys, uh, open this up and do, uh, some more, some more events, so I just wanted to put the emphasis on this, so. That's what I was gonna ask, so, we're really just, uh, pretty, concept of the event calendar, with everything under, knowing that it can change. Okay. I'm okay with that, any other questions?
It's just nice to see it, it adds.
It is. Kind of list out all, all busy, y'all. Any questions? Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the event calendar for summer twenty twenty-three through spring twenty twenty-four.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried forty-one. Recommendation to approve community event, Winter Garden Sonic Lodge, Daniel Oliver, kids permit. Yes.
Thank you, uh, the Winter Garden based Sonic Lodge is requesting to hold their annual kids parade and pancake breakfast from nine AM till eleven AM on July fourth, twenty twenty-three. The event will have approximately, approximately a thousand people in attendance, uh, the setup will begin at seven thirty, and everything will be broken down at approximately one PM, pastry will be temporarily closed for parade, so with that, staff recommends approval of the All American Kids Parade and Pancake Breakfast.
Any questions? No, we're not turning that down. We need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the All American Kids Parade.
We have a second, second, motion, a second, all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Party in the park. Yes.
Same day, uh, obviously, the city is requesting to hold the annual Fourth of July Party in Newton Park on Monday, July fourth, twenty twenty-three, from six PM till ten PM. The event will have approximately fifteen thousand people in attendance with food and snack vendors, uh, live music, kids activities, and fireworks starting at nine fifteen PM. Setup will begin at approximately two PM, and breakdown will occur after the event approximately ten PM. With that, staff recommends approval of Fourth of July Party in the Park.
Now, I comment that if you do it, your fireworks well, you don't show, short change of all the people coming to watch it. And we don't. Questions? Need a motion?
Motion to approve Party in the Park, Fourth of July, six to ten o'clock.
We have a second?
Second.
All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Madam, citizens of Winter Garden. You'll give your name and address, please?
Yes, no problem. Evening, Mayor and Commissioner, my name is Robert Visser, I live, um, at fourteen seven zero six two Lmore Loop, in, uh, Emerald Ridge neighborhood. Just wanted to comment on the postponed ordinance items that we saw postponed here tonight, um, and also, it would be great if those just went away, uh, in total, um, just wanted to let you, kind of let you guys know of a major livability issue that's occurring on that Tilden Road corridor, um, it's, it's already too busy on that corridor, um, it is, it is loud, it is congested, uh, it is unsafe, and, uh, we do not wish to see, none of my neighbors, nobody I know in that area wishes to see any further residential development, so we would urge you, witherden see, um, to go ahead and, um, vote no on that measure if those come back in front. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner, my name is Julia Visser, and I also live at fourteen seven oh six two Lmore Loop, in the Emerald Ridge neighborhood, and I'm also referring to, um, the postponed, um, agenda item. I just wanted to share that fifteen years ago, when we moved to the Emerald Ridge neighborhood, the Tilden Road corridor was quiet, pastoral, charming, and unique. I would easily skip the back entrance to our neighborhood off of Stoney Brook Parkway to drive down Tilden Road, because I enjoyed seeing the large trees and the two horse farms along Tilden Road. Our three daughters grew up learning to ride their bikes on Tilden Road, we used to visit the horses and donkeys that were formerly directly across the street from us, we loved watching the equestrian students practice at the Tilden Horse Farm. Fast forward to today, and Tilden Road is now become a sad textbook case of urban sprawl. It's loud, congested, it's over capacity already, and most importantly, it is unsafe for the people and the animals that live along this road. People drive into the lake in the back of our neighborhood, people crash into the big wall, the brick wall that borders our neighborhood, mere feet away from people who are sleeping in their beds. We cannot allow our children to ride their bikes down Tilden Road to belt me neighborhood to visit their friends, because it's so dangerous, there's no buffer between the sidewalk, and cars are filled with drivers who are distracted and looking at their phones. We have lost power several times because people crash into the power poles along Tilden Road. The four-way stop at Tilden and Tiny is an absolute disaster, we oftentimes cannot get out of our neighborhood because the traffic is so backed up. We've actually been late for the performances of one of our daughters at Sunridge Middle School, because we are literally trapped in our neighborhood, and we cannot get out around five thirty PM every single night. Our dog won't even go for a walk down Tilden Road anymore because it is so loud. The rumble strips that were just placed further down the road from our neighborhood are in an ineffective attempt to control the speed. Tilden Road was actually moved closer to the sidewalk to accommodate for a turn lane into the new Tilden Place neighborhood, making it even more dangerous. We all know about the story of this young teen who was struck by a car near Tilden on five thirty-five, this is unacceptable, and the commission needs to understand, it's only a matter of time before something like this will happen along Tilden Road if these unnecessary developments continue. There's not one single person that we have spoken to along Tilden Road who wants this annexation or rezoning, not one. If you vote yes on this proposal, you are showing us that you don't care about representing every citizen in Winter Garden, even those that don't live downtown. The only reason to annex and rezone is for increased tax revenue. The only reason to annex and rezone is for increased tax revenue. Our area of town is more than tax dollars, we are more than dollar signs. The well-being of the citizens, animals, and environment along Tilden Road is more important than an increase in revenue, revenue that won't even be used to improve any of the conditions we're currently dealing with. I can say for most of the people I've spoken with, we will be heartbroken if you vote yes on this proposal. Mistakes have already been made along Tilden Road corridor in the last few years. This is your chance to start correcting it by saying no to this proposal. Thank you for getting it.
Madam, our city attorney. Okay, sir. City manager.
Yeah, just a few items on the diocese place of information about Art Nine VIP, which is Saturday, this Saturday from six thirty to ten thirty. Just related to events that are coming up for downtown. It's the senior ladder parade, which is going to be held on Thursday, May eleventh, starting at six. And the downtown boutique, spring boutique, which will be from five to eight.
Thank you. Commissioner, madam. Commissioner, you.
I just want to thank staff for, I mean, it doesn't happen in East Winter Garden, we had two very successful stakeholder meetings in East Winter Garden, and I think you're going to start seeing things accelerate, they're making a real difference down there. Particularly, I want to recognize the police department. There are some very, very memorable differences down there that's been noticed by the residents, and I want to thank the chief and this staff. And it's not an easy job. It's hard to make everybody happy when we're doing this, but I think the majority is seeing a very positive change down there. And the police are doing it without a heavy hand either, and I think it's going over a great, the community can get great feedback. And so, thank you. That's all.
Mr. Sharp?
Well, it was out at Foundation Academy and they're groundbreaking a new building that they have going. The county presented a plan to them to kind of add the light to begin with, this county controls so, and then double lanes of tiny Tilden. And they presented that to us, but didn't get a chance to, I think, American Copy, we didn't talk about it, but now we can talk about American here. What do you think? I, I think that we should put a roundabout there, push the county to do that. Your thoughts?
My thoughts is time they get around to it, we'll.
We'll already have done it.
I don't think they'll, yeah, I don't.
You don't think the county will do anything in time soon?
Can we get money from them? We do it, but get them to chip out.
That's one of the roads that we've actually requested from the county to target for six and two S's. So with that, along with that one, we have, you know, interest in controlling what goes on, so it's early up there to happen. Okay. Whether around that is the right solution, whether around.
Okay.
But it is, you know, when the better red light comes around, as they say, two or three years later, redo everything.
I'd like for your name, Commissioner Sharp.
This is not a good discussion to have. Anything else, sir?
That is all I have. As a mayor of the county, lucky the mayor was there, otherwise he would have been on the spot.
But, Mark, Mark Anthony.
Wants to go to drive here, food supply. He wants some location, you know, maybe better spark or something than a coin. I don't think this one will be as large as the one that they did over there, this is right by Silver Star Road. But he wants to do it somewhere in May, so we have someone contact Mark and the time and the place. What else would you need?
Anything else? With that, we will adjourn.